This is Marlo and Marcy from Love and Hope. We want to welcome you to Keeping it Real with God. We're gonna start out with the Lord's Prayer, as we do every day in our lives. So if you guys don't mind joining us. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily prayer. Forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Leave us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. From thine kingdom, the power, the glory, forever and ever. Amen. Amen, amen. Uh, today we're gonna break down Proverbs one. In the book of Proverbs, we was originally written by a young man.
For a young man.
For a young man, for a young man from his father to attempt to pass down both godly wisdom and instructions. Right? Uh, in order to be successful in any part of our lives, we must learn wisdom.
That helps.
Yeah, it does help. We must learn the wisdom.
Alright, in this chapter, um, this is written in opposing actions between the wise and the wicked and presented side by side.
We'll be covering, uh, verse one through seven. We'll start with a brief introduction.
Okay, starting with Proverbs one, one, the proverb of Solomon, son of David, king of Israel. For gaining wisdom and instruction, for understanding words of insight. For receiving instruction in prudent behavior, doing what is right and just and fair. Prudent is showing care or concern for what happens to others or yourself. For giving prudence to those who are simple, acknowledge and discretion to the young. And in the Bible, when it talks about simple, simple talks about a person who is gullible or, um, doesn't have moral direction or is inclined to evil, is what fool means in the Bible. And simple. Uh, let the wise listen and add to their learnings and let the discerning get guidance. For understanding proverbs and parables, the sayings, the riddles of the wise. The fear of the Lord is the beginning of knowledge, but fools despise wisdom and instruction.
And then the next two verses are the opening statements of the opposing sides.
Okay, listen my son to your father's instruction and do not forsake your mother's teachings. They are garland to grace your head and a chain to adorn your neck. Now, when I look deeper into it, I just basically is that you should pay attention to things that your father corrects you in doing. And then, you know, anything that you're taught by your mother. But that what you learn from these things is like a crown of grace or a chain of honor. Is what that means.
I guess, and I mean, in that same sense, you know, our parents, they're always teaching us something. They're trying to teach us something. You know, right from wrong, you know, good from bad. It's really important that we listen to them. Uh, we're in times right now where kids nowadays and some adults seem to think they know everything. Uh, and it's one of those things that, that is not the case. Uh, we can learn so much from our elderly, from, uh, people off the street, people you come in contact with. Every day, all day long. I mean, I've, I've learned so much. My grandmother, she raised me. My mother was there, but my grandmother, she raised me. And, I mean, she taught me so much.
There is, and there's so many things in our life that if we would just pay attention, you know, we don't realize that until we're older, that we should have paid a lot more attention to the things they were trying to tell us back then. Life would have been so much easier if we had, if we'd paid attention.
I, I think we pick up on those little things. Uh, there, there's little lessons in everything that they try to teach us as well. But I feel like you, obviously you don't get it until you get a little bit older in your life, or when you're going through something. Uh, it's when you're going through something, you're, you, you think back to that and you're just kinda like, oh, okay, I should have listened, you know, to mom, dad, or grandma, grandpa, you know, in that sense to.
Yeah, wishing you could go back and the stories that you remember them telling, but you don't remember parts of it or any of it, but you remember they tried to tell you.
Oh, yeah.
That you, what you would give to have that time back to go and sit down and, and listen to those stories that you sit there and rolled your eyes through the first time and tried to avoid listening and
Yeah.
Just wishing they would just get on with it.
Oh, yeah. Uh, verse ten through nineteen shows the plans of the wicked to take from the innocents, an ultimate reward for the deed.
Okay. My son, if sinful ma- men entice you, do not give in to them. If they say, come along with us, let's lie in wait for innocent blood, let's ambush some harmless soul. Let's swallow them alive like the grave and whole, like those who go down to the pit. We will get all sorts of valuable things and full our houses with plunder. Plunder is stolen goods.
Okay, I, I was gonna ask you what plunder was, cause.
I know.
I did not know where plunder.
I was prepared for that, cause I knew you would ask.
It, it'd be a little more simpler if they just kept the words a little more simpler for, for us folks who just don't use big words all the time.
It's your word of the day. You've learned a new one, plunder. Drop the plunder when you're running out of that store.
Yeah.
Alright, cast lots with us. We will all share the loot. My son, do not go along with them. Do not set foot on their paths. For their feet rush into evil, they are swift to shed blood. How useless to spread a net where even a bird can see it. These men lie in wait for their own blood, they ambush only themselves. Such are the paths of all who go after ill-gotten gain. It takes away the life of those who get it.
Plunder.
To me, I, you know, it just clearly, it's, it's just talking about temptation, you know, the temptation that's put forth by sinful people around us. You know, how they try, try to entice people that are weaker than them, um, that are down and out to try to do things for them, do their bidding for them. You know, trying to offer them something that sounds great. Because, you know, they are down and out. Maybe they're, you know, between jobs and somebody offers them a deal that you could, hey, you could do this, you know, get you good money out of this and when it really comes down to it, if it sounds too good to be true, it probably is.
Well, and the sad part about that is if you have someone down on their luck, chances are they're, they're gonna do it. They're, they're gonna do the wrong thing to get ahead.
Thinking they're gonna get ahead.
Thinking they're gonna get ahead and, and.
And they may for a while.
Yeah, and, and then that chance, they, they do for a little bit, but what happens is that karma comes back, the karma comes back to maybe their children. You know, and then it puts everything into such a rut where you're for years, you're trying to get out of that karma debt that now you have to pay because you decided to do the wrong thing, which you may have thought you were trying to help out at the beginning. But I, I, I'm gonna tell y'all that you can't be doing the wrong things. I, I've done the wrong things for a lot of my life. Whether it's something small to something big. And you better bet, every bit of that karma came back to me or someone around me, uh, one of my loved ones or something, but it still came back to me. I've either had to sit there and watch it and then realize, this, this is happening because it's something I've done in my past. You know, this is, this is happening because this is something I just directly did, you know. Uh, it, it's important to always make the right decision. Like I said, and that's what God wants us to do. To, to think right, to, to make all the right decisions. You know, if you, if you're weighing one way or the other, uh, your best bet is to talk to, to God. You know, talk to your Lord and Savior. Uh, he's gonna guide you. Uh, he knows what's best for us. Uh, he's gonna make it right for you. I think that's important.
He will provide a way. You do the right thing and you're living through him. You know, we've realized that things become so much easier. Things that you thought were so hard to get and so hard to survive through. When you're striving so hard to live the right way and do the right thing and you're talking to God about it, you'll be taken care of. You will be rewarded. Things become so much easier in life for you. You don't even realize it, that everything all of a sudden, not everything's going wrong. It's not every time you turn around that this is broke or that's, you know, something's wrong all the time. It's more every time you turn around that it's going right. Everything's
Yeah.
finally lining up in your life and you're being blessed with, you know, better jobs, you know, better vehicles. Reliable vehicles where before you were in between and, you know, not knowing how you were gonna get from point A to point B and if that broken down clunker was gonna make it another trip around it or not, but when you start living through God, you know, he blesses the way for you to have reliable transportation and a, a roof over your head that's stable and.
Uh, you know, I would say, you know, a lot of people, you know, you hear that saying, uh, it's easier said than done. And, and I would say that. It is easier said than done. You know, you, you can say this, you can say that, but getting to it, i- it may be hard for some people. I know just, you know, with my life lessons, um, I didn't find a way to make time for, for God. You know, I, I thought I was God for myself. I did the things that I wanted to do and, and just reacted to everything the way that I would react to it. But what's gonna happen in that situation is you're gonna have a tower moment where everything crumbles in your life. Uh, everything, you know, any relationship that, that meant something to you, uh, not just your relationships, but the people around you, their relationships with you. Those are gonna come tumbling down. You may have something occur to you, uh, your job situation, that may come tumbling down a little bit. Uh, like we talked about a little bit, your vehicles, uh, may start breaking down. You may have this go wrong and that go wrong. There's so many things that's going to happen in your life that's gonna just come tumbling down. And at some point, you're gonna have to make a decision to say, you know what? I give it all to you, God. I, I can't do this no more. I can't run my life no more. I do not know what's best for me. And, and I will say, we don't know what's best for ourselves. We may think that we know, but we don't know. God knows what's best for us. And once you give yourself to him completely, mind, body, and soul, and let him guide you, just let him guide you, show you the way, open the doors. He'll open the doors for you. And, and just show you. I have a better plan. My plan for you guys is bigger than the plan that we have for ourselves. That's what he tells us. His plan's bigger for us than we can ever think of ourselves. Uh, living proof of that. So, uh.
Amen.
He, he calls us, I'm telling you, he's calling all of us. The times that we are in right now, he is calling us to do better, to think better.
Wake up.
Yeah, to wake up. To put people first. Put people first. To love accordingly, unconditional love. There, that, there's a difference. There is a difference.
Doesn't matter who it is, what they've done. It's not our place to judge them anyway. It's his. We're here to love one another.
Yeah.
That was what we were commanded to do, love one another.
And, and show, show the way. Like I said, with the times that we are living in right now, it's just eh, bad times and good times. We have more information than we've ever had on everything. But you still need to make the decision, am I gonna be good or bad? You know, and I, I would say it's a lot easier for us right now here to, to do the good things, to do the right things, you know, to make the right decision. We've been blessed for God to take over our lives, to give us the opportunity to be in a great position with our Lord and Savior. It took a lot of work, took a lot of tower moments. Lot of my life has broken down, but God has transformed me, transformed us in such a way that we are able to give back or help someone else out. They, when I was growing up, I didn't pay attention. My, like I said, my grandmother was there, my aunts were there. She had us all in church. But I was still so close-minded and wanted to do what I wanted to do.
You were just there.
I was just there. Yeah, I was just there. Now, you're gonna go through things through your life that shape you up into a point and get you to this point. And for those of you who are not saved, who are not given our Lord and Savior an opportunity to change your lives, you need to give him that opportunity. Dedicate yourself. Even if it's a week to start out, you can give seven days. Give seven days. I'm gonna do what the Lord wants me to do for seven days. You have to pray on it. Talk to him. He knows what's in your heart. He knows that once you give that to him, he knows. He'll start working miracles in your life.
Have to open yourself up and allow him in.
You're gonna have to give up a lot of things.
But you'll be so rewarded in the end that those things really weren't important to start with. You realize that afterwards.
Yeah.
The things that you thought were important aren't. Not at all. You were overcome this world, or rescued. Alright, I guess we move on.
Uh, yeah, uh, in verse twenty through thirty-three, wisdom replies with a warning for those who follow the wicked plans.
Out on the open wisdom calls aloud, she raised her voice in the public square. On top of the wall, she cried out. At the city gate, she makes her speech. How long will you, who are simple, love your simple ways? How long will you mockers delight in mockery and fools hate knowledge? Again, remembering your fools and your simple are the ones that are inclined to do evil and have no morals anyway. Um, repent at my rebuke, then I will pour out my thoughts to you. I will make known to you my teachings. But since you refuse to listen when I call and no one pays attention when I stretch out my hand, since you disregard all of my advice and do not accept my rebuke, I in turn will laugh when disaster strikes you. I will mock when calamity overtakes you. When calamity overtakes you like a storm, when disaster sweeps over you like a whirlwind, when distress and trouble overwhelm you. But they will call to me, but I will not answer. But they will look for me, but will not find me. Since they hated knowledge and did not choose to fear the Lord, since they would not accept my advice and spurned my rebuke, they will eat the fruit of their ways and be filled with the fruit of their schemes. For the waveredness of the simple will kill them and the complacency of fools will destroy them. But whosoever listen to me will live in safety and be at ease without fear or harm. It's just telling you, making the wise choices is, is the way to that. Um, you know, kinda like talks about in thirty-one, they eat the fruit of their ways and be filled with the fruit of their schemes. This is really the old saying, you reap what you sow.
Yeah. Yeah, that's. Uh, I'm sure plenty of us out there has reaped what we sowed.
Oh, yeah, definitely. As, you know, the, in twenty-eight, it says, they will call to me, but I will not answer. But they will look to me, but will not find me. By this time, you're already to the point that wisdom is of no use. You've already made your mistakes, your poor choices in your situations. Now you have no choice. You're, you're going to have to live with your consequences at this point.
You have to live with your consequences.
You can still turn to God, but he's still.
And he'll, and he'll find a way.
He's gonna be right there with you the whole time, but you're gonna have to live with your consequences and there will be some type of punishment at that point already, so.
And, and I mean, and if it gets to that point and if that's the case, God is still with you. You will find that eternal peace, the internal peace, right?
Yeah.
You know, and if, if you can find that, then, then that, that's a, that's a blessing in itself. You know, you, of course, you'll have on the outer part, um, a lot of regret and just a lot of different things with people. Your relationships would have broke down some way, shape, or form. You know, friends of, some friends and, and people you thought were friends, you know, would leave and, and just not be there for you or whatnot, but God will. God's always there.
Always has been.
Always has been, yeah.
You have to open the door and let him in.
Yeah.
Window or something. Okay, so basically, this whole entire chapter is nothing about making the right choices. Making all the right choices in life. And there's so many places in your life that you have the options of making
Making the right choices.
Or bad ones.
Yeah. Uh, you have that, uh, in relationships. When, when you're in school, for those of you who are in school, whether you take the, the, the high road or the low road, the, the cheating road off of papers or, you know, or even just cheating yourself out of the education. I mean, that, that's part of it too, you know. Are you not gonna put in the work for it? You know, and I'm not saying I didn't, I didn't take the high road. I took the low road, you know, in some classes, but there's other classes I, I, I really did apply myself.
I applied myself. I probably would have done a lot better in a lot of them.
Yeah.
And it's not always, you know, cheating off of someone else like that either. It's, you may not be cheating, but you may be helping somebody else to cheat by giving them the answers.
Yeah.
You're in the same boat.
I mean, and if that.
Just on the other side of it.
And if that's the case too, you know, you're depriving them of really trying to learn and engrasp what, what's going on in the whole situation, um.
Instead, you need to be taking the time to try to help them learn it, as opposed to just giving them those answers. You know, they, they don't have to take it. That's their choice, but you should offer to help them with it. You know, I can help you. I'll, I'll tutor you or, you know, something.
I, you know, in that situation too, eh, in every situation, people have to realize that we are here to help everyone. Not just, you know, certain individuals, uh, because of one reason or another. Everyone, everyone out here needs help. We all need help of the game of life, as they say, the game of life. You know, whether you have a lot of money or you don't. You know, whether you can read or write, you can. You know, if.
God don't care if you can or not.
Yeah, he doesn't. I mean, he set his rules into play. And if everybody follow his rules, which are the
Ten Commandments, yeah.
We could, the, the world would be so much better, so much simpler for us. So much simpler.
Wouldn't it be nice to sit down at night and watch the news and it'd all be good things that happened in our world instead of?
All the bad things that they fill us up with. You know, whether it's something racial that's going on, something political that's a fight, nobody should be fighting. We should all have the same goal, to help each other, to uplift each other. We should all be, be successful in the game of life.
And it's not even anymore just worrying about your kids being taken. You have to worry about being taken yourself now.
Yeah.
They're taking anybody. They don't care. Men, women, children. Uh, there's no age.
There's no age limit.
Yeah, they are not, you know, stereotyping by age or anything else when it comes down to it. They don't discriminate. We'll take the old, the young. We're gonna sell you anyway. It doesn't matter how old you are. Somebody will want you and it, it's scary. Nobody can go anywhere without worrying about this. You know, it used to be, you didn't worry if you were out as much. You were just more worried about your children.
Yeah.
And now you're not just worried about your children, you're worried about you and your children when you're out because
Everyone's.
They may just snatch the whole family. They don't know, you know, you don't know. You see all these things happen.
I mean, and that's why.
It'd be nice just to see, you know, good news on there, you know. All these people just stopped to help this family, not to kidnap them.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I feel like our world needs to change so much from within. We have to change from within.
One person at a time.
Uh, and if we can do that, a lot of this violence, a lot of this hate, a lot of the hurt will stop.
Chain reaction. You've changed to be better. You helped somebody else change. They in turn help one other person.
Yeah.
The love and all of this can spread around the world, one person at a time.
Yeah.
But it takes each person changing. Alright, let's see. I mean, there's many things though, you know, even our school, skipping classes, you know, is no different. It seems like something small, but those small things lead you to bigger things. You know, I, I got by with this, you know, skipping today. Uh, skip a few more.
Some more.
You know, or, oh, I got by with stealing that one little piece of candy, so next time it's a candy bar and then it's a bag of candy and then it, because you, you get by with it. It's easy for it to just grow and grow into bigger things, bigger sins. That's the problem is, you know, a little thing may seem frivolous, but it opens the door for sin at that point. You're, you're opening it up to the bigger, bigger, bigger things all the time.
I mean, and it's the same thing with a lie. You may tell a little, as they say, little white lie. A lie's a lie, you know, and I'm not saying I have not done that. I have done these things. These things that we are talking about today, I have done majority of this.
Yeah.
And God seen it. But I would tell you, God's forgiven me for all that. I have changed my outlook of everything because I gave myself to him. Like I said, I can't do life no more.
All of our sins will be forgiven.
Myself. He guides me. And that's what we need to understand is we need to be led by our Lord and Savior. He needs to lead us in our lives. It will change your life.
Anyway, it's not just certain people that are tempted. It doesn't matter, you know, like we said before, you're rich, you're poor, it doesn't matter. You're just led to a different type of sin based on where you are.
Yeah.
You know, you have the problem with a lot of our youth that grow up in areas that are impoverished. They don't have lots of money, you know, maybe no money.
Yeah.
You know, and these kids are in areas where there's gangs. They're more tempted to join them. To, you know, and maybe they think it's for the best. Oh, I can do this. I'll get money. I can feed my family. I can help my mom feed my family, cause there's nobody else to. They're drawn into that, you know, and I noticed there was a fact on how many, as of two thousand twelve, you know, National Gang Center reported that there's over thirty thousand gangs in the United States alone.
That's a lot.
That puts a lot of sin out there to draw people into, you know, but even the rich, you know, they can be led astray, you know, lapse of judgment at work. You know, you're into some espionage and, uh, you know, swiping a little money here and there and filtering it to your account instead of somebody else's.
Just cause they have all this money, the rules don't apply to them.
Yeah.
I mean, there's laws out there and then there's God's law. But if you do God's law, you don't have to worry about the regular laws out here, the, the state laws.
Cause then you're, you're following everything anyway, you know, and and law, you know, we're, we're have, we have to follow these laws and if it's something that you believe is immoral and, you know, against God, that's why he gives us a voice. You know, we should work to have these things changed. To choose these laws that are in place that we know to be immoral to start with. You know, peaceful protests, not burning people's houses and businesses down.
Yeah.
Go out and, you know, try to pass legislation, get petitions going, things that you can legally do. Going out and burning stuff down isn't getting anything legally done, except probably jail time once you get caught for doing it.
Yeah, and let alone you're hurting, you're hurting people.
You're hurting so many other people in the process, yeah.
I mean, and that's the thing. We should not be hurting no one at all.
Yeah, burning these little businesses down, this is a fan. Burning these little businesses down, this is a family that has probably, you know, has worked hard. And struggled to start a business to take care of their family and you just destroyed their livelihood or, you know. They don't think about these things. They think this hurts the government. No, you're hurting people. You're just hurting the people around you is all you're doing. But there's, you know, as far as being tempted, there's so many other places, you know, even even the companies that you work for. You know, big companies, they're not running things right. They're not doing things right. You know, maybe they're asking you to do something that's wrong. They want you to change sales numbers or whatever it is to make it look better for them or. Just passing off bad product just to keep money coming in because they don't wanna take the loss.
They don't wanna take the loss. It's. That's that's important. Like I said, it's it's important to to make these wise decisions, to be able to stand up. For the things that you know what's right, not fall into place. You know, fa- fall in line as they say. You stand up for what's right.
What it comes down to, you know. Learning goes so much beyond the things you learn in school, you know, your science and math and all those things. You know, it it comes down to learning, learning to share, learning how to have good family relationships. A good structure in society, you know, and um teaching goes beyond a lot of things, you know, there's. A lot of entertainment that we watch that is um. Not good for us, you know, we shouldn't be watching. It's so much violence and everything on TV anymore, but. But there are things that are are good for us to watch that have good moral lessons in them. You know, far beyond, you know, Sesame Street as a kid and, you know, Big Bird and our little trash can dude Oscar.
Kids learn a lot from that, but they also learn a lot for the things that that are around them, their environment. They're watching, you know, the parents, what they're talking about. You know, what are they seeing every day, you know, I I I've seen things growing up. And it may have taught me to be one way versus another way, which it 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 does that. That that's where you're getting the the racial part, the racial division, you know. Depending on where you are in the states. Kids are watching what their elders and their elders have done for years. Obviously, way back then, it was a lot different than it is right now. But we're still dealing with the same issues that we were dealing with way back then, just. On a much bigger scale. It it's out there for us to see.
And it's people want to live too much in the past is so much of the problem. You know, they still want to bring up all the things that our our ancestors did before us. You know. You ain't ever been in this life. I ain't ever owned one. Maybe at work, we feel like we are somebodies. But but as far as everyday life, they want to blame people for. What people, our parents, our grandparents, our great-grandparents did and the way they thought and believed. They're not willing to move past this to, you know, they wanna blame, you know, the person next to them. Oh, well, your grandparents owned slaves. Well, I didn't though. I'm not them. I didn't do that. You know, well, my grand- my grandparents were slaves. I'm sorry. I don't know what that feels like because I wasn't. That has changed. And when people start letting go some of that in the past.
And that's the thing, uh, you talk about in the past. A lot of people, everyone needs to let the past go. The past is the past. You need to be looking at what's present and your future. But everybody still has to change from within.
Everybody else's past isn't getting you into heaven. Your future is though, what you do today and tomorrow and the day after that, the way you live. Is what God looks at. He doesn't look at what your grandparents and great-grandparents did. He looks at what you are doing now.
Yeah, I always look at it as if we we can push a reboot button right now, just push a button and it just changes everybody. And just start over.
Oh, control delete. Let's restart the system and start all over.
Start over. Well, you can do that. You can literally wake up the next morning.
And be completely different, live a different life.
It takes nothing but a second. You think it, you say it with your heart, God hears it. And there you go.
God, I can't do this anymore. Help me. And that's it. And if you mean that in your heart sincerely, you just open the door and let him in. That was it. He hears your cry for help.
He hears all our cry for help. We're people crying left and right for help. They may be not indirectly saying, help me. But it's through the things that they are doing. If they're doing the wrong thing, they're making the wrong decision. He sees all. He knows all. He hears all.
Yeah, so many people dwell so much on on the negative of everything around us. And there's plenty of it this year for us to see. Everybody's talking about twenty twenty, all the bad things that we've been through this year, but. You know, when you when you look for a positive message in everything, then you'll realize that there is one everywhere. You know, okay, so we've got put in quarantine. We weren't able to go out and do all these things that we always did.
That gave you an opportunity.
You just got more time at home with your family where you should have been probably to start with anyway. Spending quality time with your family instead of out sending them out to do this away and you go do something else and. So many families, it's brought them together, you know, they're spending more time with their children.
It gives you opportunity to work on yourself. Maybe you need to go within and find out who you are. You know, where you fit in in life.
You look at things so much differently, you know, how much everything means to you when when you're faced with a pandemic. You know, you start noticing how much more important your life is and the lives of others around you. You know, you've had somebody in your family that's had this virus. You realize real quick or you're exposed to the virus. It's a wake-up call. I've been there. I've been exposed to it a lot. Person to person, taking care of a gentleman that actually had it face to face with him. And I was scared to death to go back in. You know, I just, that comes with healthcare, but I literally, you know, I I kinda left it to my family to decide. I even went to my kids. You know, this is what I feel like I need to do is I need to go back in here and take care of him. But if you guys don't want me to, I understand their fear too. You know, if you don't want me to, I won't do this because it affected them just as much. You know, and they were very supportive. They were, Mom, this is what you need to do. Go do it. But it gives you a whole different perspective on your life, your family. How much your entire family means to you because not only was I putting myself at risk by going back. I put my entire family at risk of getting this because I was exposing myself to it and gonna bring that back home.
And a lot of people may think twenty twenty wasn't, isn't the best year. And moving forward probably wasn't their best year. But it gave a lot of people and it gives a lot of people hope next year will be better. You know, hope. I I got opportunity to spend with my family and and watch them grow. There's some parents out there just work, 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 work and they don't see their children, young children grow up. They hit fourteen, fifteen and you're thinking to yourself.
What happened? Where'd they, when did this happen?
Where, yeah, where'd the time go? I mean, this. So much opportunity to go back to where things were simple in life. Where all you have was your family. You didn't really have all these negative things outside of the home. Distracting you. You know, everybody's running and gunning everywhere.
All the time, rushed to do this, rushed to do that and, you know. Yeah, it hasn't been an easy year for a lot of people, you know, and unfortunately, a lot of people have lost their jobs. You know, and maybe lost their homes, lost a lot of things in this. They had, but if you think back, they've had to return to a simpler way of life. We've become so complacent with having the big fancy things and the big expensive dinners out and. You know, I grew up on peanut butter and jelly sandwiches, you know, and you do what you have to to survive. But if you have, you know, your health and your family and God.
Your faith.
You have everything you need.
That's all you need.
I mean, to me, I've always said I would rather be happy and living under a bridge. Than rich and completely miserable. Because if you don't, you know, if you feel empty in your life, money doesn't fill that. Money doesn't buy you eternal happiness. God does. You know, I would much rather be happy and not have nothing, though that I have God.
You know, I feel like we are in in times right now. Just, you know, my opinion. I mean, and God has given given us opportunity after opportunity to change. To give ourselves to him, to make the right decisions, to be on the good side. You know, and that's what's happening right now. He's given us opportunity to dig within, to repent our sins and come to him. He's calling his children. We've seen so much death this year. So many people are being called home to God that. It's an eye-opener. We have to wake up. We all have to wake up. A lot of us, we are all still stuck in our feelings. And that's a problem because you're making decisions based upon how you feel. It's not how you decision make. You you give it to God. He will help you think logically to make a right decision, not based upon how you feel inside. So you're hurting. I'm going to make a decision because I'm hurting inside. That that's not the right decision to make.
Okay, it comes down to, you know, your feelings in general. If you if you literally have to stop and think. Ooh, I don't know. Should I do this? You probably shouldn't. If it has hit you hard enough that you've paused in thinking, ooh, I don't know how this is gonna turn out. Maybe I shouldn't do this. It probably wasn't the choice to make to begin with. It probably was something you should have moved right on by and.
So we we've covered the.
Proverbs one.
Proverbs one. And in Proverbs one, we have many lessons in it, correct?
All about wisdom, choosing the right sides, that, you know. All the life lessons that come with it, you know, and and really. I had never even read Proverbs one until we got ready to do this, you know, and realizing. I never knew this story existed in the Bible of of this father, you know. Doing no different than we do for our kids, trying to teach them right from wrong and. And this was his. His lesson to his son to try to show him, you know, how li- how good it can be. But how bad it can be too. But if you don't follow my wisdom and my words, it can go so wrong.
It's gonna go south quick, as they say.
Sure can, so fast. I think we have covered all of this. We want to end this in some prayer.
I sure do. Um, first and foremost, I I just wanna thank everybody for joining us at Love and Hope with Keeping It Real With God. Uh, we will continue.
Also, we accept prayer requests. You can email those to us at love and hope, all one word, at yahoo dot com. And if you want your prayer request to be aired on the next one for more people to hear to pray also. Just leave us a little note. Um, if you want it to just be private between us. You will be prayed for. We will pray for you. And we will just ask for a silent prayer at the end for those in need. God knows what the needs are. Uh, but feel free to email us there at love and hope at yahoo, it's love and hope three, three, three. I got it now. Love and hope. At yahoo dot com. And anything else that you wanna talk about, if you have ideas for our show or anything, we would love to hear those too and you can send those there also. And we want you all to have a very blessed day.
Yeah, please like, share.
Please subscribe. It helps us to grow this so that we can get it out there to more people.
Right, um, Heavenly Father, we wanna thank you for all that you have done and all the things you continue to do for all of us out here. May our faith grow stronger and our connection with you grow deeper. We can't do it alone and we ask you just to guide us in all the ways that you do, Lord. You're everything we need in our lives and more, and we cannot do it without you. We thank you. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.